is now in session. But everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the newest Alderman, Alderman Bailey will lead us in the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Kennedy.
Here.
Alderwoman Bukovic.
Here.
Alderman Dougherty.
Here.
Alderman Galhard.
Here.
Alderman Bailey.
Here.
Alderman Schmelsling.
Here.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Okay, every president, we have a quorum. The first part of our meeting today is the annual organizational meeting. Every April, we have elections and the first meeting after the elections, the common council has an opportunity to reorganize. We do so under the ordinances 2.2.16, section F, of our code of ordinances for the city of Glendale. The first thing we have to do tonight is elect a common council president. Just a reminder to members of the council, the mayor has absolutely no say in this. So if there are multiple candidates and there's a tie, you just keep voting until there's not a tie. I do not break a tie. So I will now open the floor to nominations for the position of common council president. Alderman Dougherty.
Alderman John Galhard.
Okay, there's been a motion to nominate John Galhard. John, do you accept the nomination?
I accept.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Alderwoman Shaw.
I nominate Alderwoman Tameka Bukovic.
Okay, Alderwoman Tameka Bukovic has been nominated. Is there, do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Okay, she's accepted. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? And third call, are there any other nominations? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to close nominations?
Moved.
Move Alderwoman Shaw's or second? Second, Alderwoman Bukovic to close nominations. All in favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, motion carries. We have two options for voting. One is to do it by voice vote. The other is to do it by writing down who you want to vote for. I'm fine with whatever. I just go around and we'll do a roll call vote and you just say whether you're voting for Bukovic or Galhard, or unless someone wants to have written ballots, then we could do that. All right, then we'll go ahead and start with the roll call vote then. So when your name is called, state either Bukovic or Galhard. Ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Alderman Dougherty.
Galhard.
Alderman Galhard.
Galhard.
Alderman Bailey.
Bukovic.
Alderman Schmelsling.
Galhard.
Alderwoman Shaw.
Bukovic.
I believe that's a three to three vote. Okay. Well, then we have an opportunity then to to vote again, unless Alderman Dougherty, you're looking like you want to make a commenter. Okay. Well, then I guess we we continue to vote until there is a common council president. So I'm going to discuss. Yeah, if you want to have discussion, go right ahead. So Alderman Schmelsling.
Thank you. I know. I look around and Alderman Bukovic has done this last two years. So I think potentially maybe time to to mix it up again. I know Alderman Galhard said it before as well, but just think it's good to have some turnover on this so that we have a good mix of who's involved. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Alhard. Yeah, I mean, I, you know, certainly thank Tameka for the last two years, but I do think that we need to to mix it up from time to time, and that's why I'm willing to serve in this role.
Alderwoman Bukovic.
Understand that I've been here two years, but I've also put in the work for two years. I have been at meetings. I have the time to do it. I have the, I'm in the community to do it. So I think I my work can speak for itself, so.
Thank you. Anyone else wish? All right, then I'll ask the clerk to call a roll and we'll do a vote again. The second ballot.
Alderwoman Bukovic.
Bukovic.
Alderman Dougherty. Alderman Galhard.
Galhard.
Alderman Bailey. Alderman Schmelsling.
Galhard.
Alderwoman Shaw. Bukovic.
We're still at a tie? And I believe we can't proceed unless we have a common council president. So I guess others want to speak?
I am going to sit a paper ballot since everyone's going to say the same thing verbally.
Okay. And she's prepared. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
This has some extra ones she found. That's what you've been trained for.
Those who didn't hear the sidebar comment up here, it is the clerk's job to run elections, even common council elections apparently. So, all right, so you write either Bukovic or Galhard on your ballot. Place your ballot up here, fold it in half, and then the clerk will collect them and count them. Only vote one.
Bukovic. Galhard. Bukovic. Galhard. Bukovic. Galhard. Speak.
Alderwoman Shaw. My question is, what does the ordinance say as it pertains to a tie when it comes to common council president?
That you continue to vote until there someone can withdraw or you vote until someone changes their vote. The mayor has no, absolutely no say whatsoever in the choice of the common council president. You're essentially choosing when I'm not here, who's in charge, and I don't have any say in that.
That I understand, and I know we've had ties in the past, probably obviously before your time. So with respect to that, I also know that we're supposed to put whomever we're voting for along with our, who we are voting, because it's still, you have to keep it as a legal document. So I don't know if everyone put their names on who they voted for.
Actually, the selection of a leader of a body can be done by secret ballot.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. That's why I wanted a clarification.
I'm aware of that because we've actually done it at the school board level and had, yes, the the selection of a leader of a body. So everyone was already elected by the public. Your selection of who you're choosing as your common council president can be done by secret ballot.
I said, I just was, yeah, for the record.
If anybody's looking for it, it's 2.2.4. In the, in the, yeah, that's the ordinance number.
Round again with the paper.
All right. Do you want to give ballots again? This is the fourth ballot now.
Bukovic. Galhard. Bukovic. Galhard. Bukovic. Galhard.
There, I withdraw.
Alderwoman Bukovic is withdrawn.
It's too much of a, I mean, I do this because I want the city, but it's, I'm not going to sit here for a couple of hours for a position that.
Alderwoman Bukovic is withdrawn. So they're asked then, with all in favor then of appointing as the next common council president, Alderman Galhard, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Alderman Galhard, congratulations. Hopefully I don't get hit by a bus in the next year. All right. Next item on our, on our agenda this evening is the appointment of the common council standing committees. As you know, we have two common council standing committees. And for the past few years, it is, I have not changed the committees. And the most, the one that is the most active is the Legislative Finance and Judiciary. That's the one that approves the liquor licenses. And so this year I've decided to just flip flop the membership. So to Alderwoman Bukovic, I'm asking to, for you to approve Alderwoman Bukovic as chair and Joanne Shaw and Philip Bailey as members of Public Safety, Public Works. Jim Dougherty as chair with Steve Schmelsling and John Galhard as members of Legislative Judiciary and Finance. So yep, so Public Safety, Public Works is the one that meets less often, and it does not have the liquor licenses. LF and J or LJNF meets more often because it has the liquor license changes. So just flip flopping the membership, you've been on the, on the Legislative Judiciary and Finance. This time you'd be the chair of Public Safety, Public Works with Alderwoman Shaw and Alderman Bailey. And then Alderman Dougherty would be chair of Legislative Judiciary and Finance with Alderman Schmelsling and Alderman Galhard. So can I have a motion to approve the common council standing committees with their chairs?
Second.
Move by Alderman Galhard, second of Alderwoman Shaw. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. The next item for consideration tonight is the appointment to various committees, commissions and boards. You were sent out in your packet, a list of all of the different committees, commissions and boards. There are a handful of changes, but a lot of people were reappointed. They've served for a certain amount of time and asked them to be reappointed. Couple, I'll just, I will identify here. We did have a vacancy on the plan commission. And in the past, we have appointed the Convention Visitors Bureau Board, but now they've elected their own membership. Our citizen member on that board was Sean Story. So since his committee that he was serving on was basically taken away because now the organization elects its own member, its own leadership, I asked Sean if he would take a position on the plan commission. So he's been working with the business community for the last three years and agreed to take a position on the plan commission. Any other, let's see, other major changes to bring up? Police Commission. After 20 years on the commission, Mary Vergat is stepping down, so not being reappointed. And I'm appointing Nancy Yarborough to a five-year term. She has had an opportunity already to sit down to meet the chief and is excited to join the, the police commission. And then the other one I would mention is just that the North Shore Library Board, under the new agreement, there is not a position on the board for the superintendent of schools as there has been in the past. So I am asking you to appoint as a citizen member representing Glendale, Dr. Greg Cabara. Since he is the superintendent of schools, he's also a Glendale resident, so he'd be on the North Shore Library Board. And that allows us actually to stay in, state statutes actually dictate that the school district has to have a representative on the board. So that allows us to continue to be in compliance with the state statute. Those are the major changes. But for the most part, most everybody else is a reappointment. So any questions or comments? Can I have a motion then to approve all of the commission committee and board report or commission committee and board nominations from the mayor?
I moved.
Alderman Galhard, second of Alderman Schmelsling. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Next item for consideration is public comments. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the mayor and council on items that are not on tonight's agenda, but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council on a non-agenda item? I don't see anyone in the council chambers wishing to be recognized. Is there anyone on the Zoom that wishes to address the mayor and council? If so, you may unmute and state your name and address. Okay, no public comment, we'll move on. We have four items on the consent agenda. We had the minutes from four meetings held March 28th, April 9th, 11th and 18th. The monthly reports from our various departments, a resolution setting the time and date for the board of review meeting and a payment to Vizu Sewer for part of the sewer lining project. And I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please. Move Alderman Dougherty, is there a second? Second. Second of Alderman Bailey. Any discussion? Without objection, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the first of a long list of new business items. The first one is a resolution in support of democracy and nonpartisan election administration. And this is actually being brought forward by me and Alderwoman Bukovic. We had a conversation about a lot of the threats that have been made against poll workers and municipal clerks. And we felt it was important that we as a community state that we support the work done by our city clerk and by our friends and neighbors who show up and work the polls for us every election day. And so the resolution that was put into your packets is saying essentially, we support democratic elections, free and fair elections that are held in our state, and we support the work that is being done by our city clerk and our poll workers. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please? Move Alderwoman Bukovic is her second. Second of Alderman Schmelsling, any discussion? All right, call for a vote. All those in favor of adopting the resolution, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Resolution is adopted. The next resolution, and I don't see Alderman Wheezy here, was to honor Alderman Wheezy for his 15 years of service to the city of Glendale. And I'll just read the resolved, there's a whole bunch of whereas clauses that list all the different things that Alderman Wheezy did during his 15 years, the committees he chaired, but the biggest one I wanted to mention was that he was the, the co-chair of the committee that went out and fundraised for Maslow's Park. They did get over $2 million in pledges from local businesses, which allowed us to move forward with the construction of Maslow's Park. And without Alderman Wheezy's help, I don't know that we'd be able to have a beautiful park that we have right now. So the therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council recognize the tremendous service of Alderman Richard Wheezy and thank him on behalf of the residents of the entire city for his tireless efforts to improve the quality of life in our community. Can I have a motion to adopt the resolution, please? Move by Alderman Dougherty, second of Alderman Galhard. Any discussion? All in favor, oh, sorry, Alderman Dougherty.
I'd go as far as saying we wouldn't have a park. I mean, I really think he took that on and yeoman's work and not easy because a lot of things were promised and guaranteed and people didn't hold their end of it, but Dick held our end of it up, so. Very proud of the work you did on that.
You, you've heard the joke before of going out with the, the tin cup and pencils, right, to try and raise money. He went out with a tin cup and a PowerPoint presentation to a lot of local businesses and convinced many of them to sponsor the park, so. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of adopting, please say aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries, resolution is adopted. Next, we have, we're going to turn it over to the chief to recognize a number of officers who were involved in the Milwaukee River Rescue on April 10th. Chief.
All right, thank you. We have some officers that are in attendance today, so Officer Andrew Reichel, if you guys can walk up. And then we have Officer Robert Wilson. Officer Jamie Burns. We got Sergeant Eric Guzey. And I do not believe Sergeant Nick's, or Officer Nick Smith is not, oh, there he is, I can't see him back there. Officer Smith, and then it looks like Detective Sam Crenn is not present today. But just a little overview, Officer Reichel, Wilson and Burns received the award of valor from our department. That's the second highest award that they can receive. Sergeant Guzey, Detective Crenn and Officer Smith received the lifesaving awards. Basically on Sunday, April 10th, about 1:51 PM, there was a report of a car in the river, the Milwaukee River off of Hampton Avenue. When our officers got there, they're the first responders. There was a vehicle that was in the middle of the river, probably 30 to 40 yards out, completely submerged in 10 to 12 feet water. As you know, the water is quite cold at this time. Officer Wilson and Burns took off their heavy equipment, dove into the water, swam out there, tried to get a hold of them. They could not get them out of the water or out of the car. They came back. Officer Reichel showed up, took his stuff off. He went out again with Officer Wilson. They were able to push the window down, got the guy back onto shore, in which time Officer Smith, Detective Crenn and Sergeant Guzey all did chest compressions. He was, did not have a pulse. They each did chest compressions until they were exhausted. At which point the fire department showed up and they were turned over to their. Person did have a pulse by that time, took them back to the hospital. And I just like to think that what they did was, was very extraordinary. I believe that they went above and beyond the call of duty during this incident. And they performed a courageous act while facing personal hazard to life and safety. And their professionalism and dedication and teamwork really showed up. And I, I'm very happy and proud that they are members of our department. I asked him if anyone. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, officers. Thank you, chief. It's nice to, to be able to recognize those things when they happen and, and, you know, certainly very positive for our department and, and it certainly reflects highly on the caliber and the character of the people that we've hired. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, guys. All right, moving on with our agenda. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Forgot Robert Spitterker is here, the chief of the fire department. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything, Robert, or?
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, moving on then with the rest of our agenda. Item 5D, application for a temporary picnic license filed by Glendale Little League. Mr. Hoffman?
Megan.
Oh, Megan's got this one, okay.
Okay, so the Glendale Little League applied for a temporary Class B liquor license or picnic license for their family fun day, which is held at 1401 West Civic Drive on June 4th. They have applied for this license in the past, but last year we had a complaint because they were serving vodka lemonade at their event, which is not covered under the temp class B license. Apparently.
So the brick is only beer and wine, right?
It is, yes. And the brick is the provider of their alcohol.
Okay.
So when they do these events. And they, apparently this was not their first violation of this particular, they've done this in the past where they've served vodka lemonade. This was just the first time they got caught. So they were told last year that it would be, because normally these don't come before the council. Every time, once they've been approved, they're pretty much approved unless there's an issue. So they were told last year that it would be brought before council and it would be up to the council to determine whether they would be approved for any more of these temp class B licenses. And I have the email conversation between myself and the Little League and then their representative from last year. And then she applied again this year and during the phone conversation asked if she could apply because they wanted to do their temp class B and then, of course, serve vodka lemonade. So I'm not, I feel like if this is approved again, this needs, we.
There's not a temporary permit that allows.
There is not, there is no, no.
Okay.
Even the brick would not be able to sell vodka lemonade off their premise. They can only serve it at the brick. So even if you would choose to approve it, I think that it would need to be under the condition that someone would need to verify that they're following the conditions for temporary class B liquor license and only selling fermented malt beverages and wine. And fermented malt beverages, I have the definition if anybody needs to know what that means. So it is beer, but I know there's been some question about, you know, does that include canned beverages and things like that? But it does, it does include like wine coolers, so. But it would not include, you know, like a canned whiskey, canned vodka lemonade, canned, anything like that, so.
Right, right. Okay, and I do notice that the recommendation from staff is that we review the requests. The recommendation from staff isn't that we approve.
I did not provide a recommendation because that is ultimately up to you.
Right, right, but, but typically, like, we don't even see these unless there's been a problem. So, you know, anybody who makes a motion today, it should be a motion, you know, if there's a motion to approve, motion to approve, subject to verification. And maybe we could even ask if like the police or somebody could stop by during the day and just verify, so. Alderman Schmelsling.
They, did they provide a menu or like a price sheet or anything for what they had planned to serve? Because I think that would pretty much address it right away if they don't have it on the menu.
No, they didn't provide anything. Apparently last year they just had like a chalkboard outside and on their chalkboard they had lemonade scribbled on their chalkboard, so.
And that wasn't Glendale Little League's quote unquote idea, it was more their provider?
No, I think it was Glendale Little League.
Okay.
It may be in conjunction with the provider, but I guess it was a big seller. So, you know, it's a fundraising event for the Little League. So I don't know the logistics, nor do I want to speculate, so.
Okay.
Alderwoman Bukovic. Microphone, please.
Said they, they were warned last year before they got the liquor license.
They were warned after because a resident told us that they were selling vodka lemonade. So we had a complaint afterwards, but it is very clear on their application what they are allowed to sell. So they knew or should have known in their application, which they've done for nine years in a row, what they were allowed to sell.
And is it first year that we know, have they done it previously and we just didn't catch it, or?
That is my understanding.
So I guess we have before us a, an application for a temporary picnic license, which would allow Glendale Little League to operate its fundraising event and to sell beer and wine, just the class B items. Does somebody want to make a motion? And I'm leaving it open ended here, so Alderman Dougherty.
I'd move that we approve it and I would add to that, certainly, let's make sure they understand what a class B is.
Okay. There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alderman Galhard. Alderwoman Bukovic, you want to be on?
Yeah, I have a question. Can we? And this is a question, can we stipulate that if they violate this time, we will? Oh, I'm sorry. So if we pass. So if we pass this, can we put in the, if you violate this, you cannot come back to the council for five years to ask for any kind of liquor license. It's, it's more so just that we are, we're going to allow you to do it this one time to prove that you understand this. But if we catch you, you're done getting liquor licenses for.
Are you making a motion to?
I'm asking, can I do that?
You, you, you can. So do you want to make a motion to amend the, the motion? To include that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been, Alderman Vukovich has made a motion that we.
He made an amendment.
A motion to amend, right? The original motion, the motion was to approve and this, no, she's asking that we amended. So it's been moved, is there a second?
Second to caveat.
Okay, so it's now been moved and seconded, Alderman Doherty?
Curious, what are we saying for violation? We're going to define anything that violates the law, we're going to define.
Oh, this liquor provision.
They're, they're serving the vodka lemonade.
If there's some other problem.
No, this is just specifically for this license. If they have other problems, that doesn't have anything to do with this, that's not it. So I am saying they violate this liquor license. They are.
I just wanted that clear.
Okay. But.
And liquor laws are actually set by the state.
Right.
So actually violating a state law when they do that, we happen to be the one that administered the, the licenses. But yeah, they're actually violating state statutes. Yeah, all city attorney.
Thank you. I just, a couple of clarifications I wanted to make. When, when you have a license that's issued, that's renewable each year, then there is a property interest that comes with that. And then there are due process requirements that would apply to either suspending or revoking a license. This one though, is not like that. It's just an ad hoc, you know, one year for one event license. So whatever happens next year. You know, they can't come back and say, well, you gave us one last year, so you're compelled to give us one this year. You can evaluate them each on their own merit each year. And so if, if it turns out that staff reports that there were violations or there were problems, there's no obligation whatsoever to, you know, to reissue a license like there would be. You know, with due process concerns that are on a renewable license that is, you know, extended year after year after year. So you wouldn't necessarily have to do that. The only other issue I see there is potentially tying the hands of future boards, because it's going to come before the board on a year by year by year basis. I think you probably do, it's kind of a gray area here, but I think you probably do have the authority if you want to go through it and say the condition is if the, if this particular applicant is caught in violation of that provision, the, as, as part of accepting the license, the applicant agrees that they will not apply for a license in the next five years or something along those lines. So it's, it's, so it's a condition of the granting, not a, not a, not a review for the next future year for the board. So it's, the applicant would be saying, yes, if we do, if we're caught, you know, violating, we won't, we agree that we're not eligible for a license for five years essentially.
Okay. To just, just to clarify the, the process for, for the city attorneys, ensure a new city attorney. When, when these come before us, we approve them the first time. And then if they come back every year and keep asking for licenses, the clerk automatically has the ability by past common, by past common council motion to just usher them again, because they've had no problems, they can just, the clerk just can issue them without common council approval. So what we're essentially doing, if, if we adopt this amendment and then adopt the full motion is stating to the clerk, when she issues this, she will tell them, if you're in violation, the common council has directed me not to issue you a license for the next five years. And that way it'll be clear when they, when the license is issued to them, that they know that they can't serve their vodka lemonades this year or any other year. Yeah.
I would like to do a friendly amendment to, to word it the way he specified, or the attorney specified. Still getting the same feel of what it is, but.
What do, what do you want that language to read?
I'm going to repeat that.
Yeah.
The applicant agrees that as a condition of receiving a liquor license for picnic liquor license for this year's event, that if there is any violation of serving anything other than fermented malt beverages, the applicant agrees they will not be eligible for a license for the next five years. That way it puts the impetus on the applicant and the applicant agrees that they're not.
You want that to be your amendment to the motion?
Yes. Yes, but I.
Okay, and are you willing to second that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Here's my other question. And I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but the one thing about this that made me think about this is the, the person is the applicant, correct? The one, whoever, whoever that is, so if they come back with another mom that comes back with the.
An organization.
Well, so, so that is my question too, because looking at the application, the organization is the Glendale Little League, but the person applying as the agent on behalf of the Glendale Little League is a particular person, I don't know if you want me to name that, like I'll do what we usually do for agents, it's Jay Merk. And so is it, are we saying that it's the agent or are we saying that it's the Glendale Little League? Okay, I just wanted to verify, because if Jay Merk would come back with a different organization, would she also be?
No, it would, it would run with the, I think the intent was to make it run with you.
Okay.
And I just want to clarify that, because if, if Jay Merk does it this time and they violate and then Betty Apple comes in and says, I am applying. If we don't do this correctly, then we don't have any, I mean it.
But as an agent for that organization, they represent that organization. So when they accept this.
Oh, that's, I just wanted to clear.
I mean, the Bavarian Soccer Club has been getting these for their summer events for years and there's been no violations. The clerk just keeps, you know, issuing them every time they come in, because they don't violate it. So, and they have different agents, you know, the boards change for the Bavarian Soccer Club over time and different, different people apply, but it's the same organization. All right, so right now we have a motion to amend, it's improperly seconded. All those in favor of amending the motion to include the language that the city attorney has given us, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right, so now we do have a motion to approve and that, that we direct the clerk then to tell them that, you know, if they, in issuing this, that if they violate, that the clerk has been directed not to allow them to apply for a license for the next five years per the council, council decision. So any further discussion on that amended motion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. All right, the next item is a specific implementation plan. This is discussion and possible action for a specific implementation plan for the planned unit development district for Devo Properties, River Park Apartments, sixteen sixteen West Bender Road. And I see that Mr. Fellows is here representing the Plan Commission who approved this a couple of weeks ago, so.
There you go. Okay, um, this project you probably already saw it with the general development plan. This is the project over on, on Bender. And they're essentially going to be renovating the existing building. The packet does have the specific landscaping. Petra, there were a couple of conditions with regard to stormwater and some utility items from planning commission. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
And the, the Plan Commission did review this already and found that it to be essentially what was presented to us in the past. So the Plan Commission recommendation that our last meeting, I believe was unanimous.
Yes, and then the, mind you, your next element agreement that will come before just the common councils. So essentially we're hoping for May ninth, we'll have a development agreement and with the developer and bring that to you. And that would be the final step.
And that doesn't go back to the Plan Commission that just comes to us, but you will review that as well, the city attorney to make sure that it, everything that we've agreed to previously is what, is what's in that agreement.
Correct, we're currently working on that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Alderman Schmelzling?
This is totally out of my wheelhouse, so just tell me if I'm completely off here, but I noticed they're going to be painting a lot of the brick. Isn't that usually not a good idea for structural reasons? I was just curious.
Painting brick doesn't really have much to do with, from a structural perspective. If it, if you use the wrong paint, it might not stick and then become sort of a maintenance issue. If it's really old brick, sometimes you will actually paint it to try to prevent water infiltration. But if it's, it really depends on the type of brick, if it will cause an issue or not. So but usually right now, the current trend is kind of to paint brick people, that's sort of an aesthetic at the moment. So at sometimes it's kind of frowned upon, but it's kind of popular in trendy circles at the moment.
That's something that can contain moisture and I know that's an older building, just wanted to call it out, so.
Yeah, it's a.
Any other questions? Okay, so we do have a specific implementation plan, a recommendation from staff. There is to approve the specific development plan for the planned unit development at sixteen sixteen West Bender. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Doherty, is there a second?
I can.
Second of Alderman Gelhard, any further discussion? Alderman Vukovich, yes.
This is just a regular apartment complex.
It was formerly a nursing home and they're doing interior work to turn it into apartments, yeah.
And fair market or?
I understanding is it fair, it's fair market. I am not aware if they're going to be working with any kind of federal program or anything from that perspective.
I was just wondering if it was senior living, that's all, that's really what I was getting at.
It's, it's not, it is all fair market housing and it's open to all age groups, yeah. All right, we're going to call for a vote then, all those in favor of approving specific implementation plans, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next item also is Mr. Fellows, this is a certified survey map. We've been presented with a certified survey map to combine several parcels together for the purpose of Chick-fil-A constructing its new restaurant at fifty two oh one North Port Washington Road. Mr. Fellows?
This is a fairly simple CSM, essentially there is some right of way that is owned by the DOT to the southern tip of the parcel. The DOT has agreed to sell that to the developer. And essentially what that will allow is for the driveway to better align with the intersection that is a intersection with a traffic light. So all of the turning movements are going to now be aligned with the previous user, they had kind of a lower traffic volume. It wasn't so much of a concern, but with the volume that would be anticipated from the drive through at the Chick-fil-A, it will provide for better circulation and better alignment.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the certified survey map?
I can.
Move Alderman Vukovich, seconded by Alderman Doherty, any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Carries. Next item is item five G, review and approval of Johnson Controls' request for open burn permit to maintain the prairie at fifty seven fifty seven North Green Bay Avenue.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you have a memo which outlines the background issue associated with this control burn, again, it's two different cells on their site on the north and northwest portion of their property. I received contact by North Shore Fire Rescue. They have approved the permit contingent upon the common council approving specifically the application and paperwork. In your packet identifies a burn date of April twentieth, which is this Saturday. One thing I would like the council to be aware that this does happen typically every two years or so. If you so wish and feel comfortable, you could change, I guess, the motion to allow for up to a five year burn permit period as opposed to them coming forward each time. So whoever makes a motion, if you support that, take that into consideration.
That would just allow them to coordinate directly with, and it's actually April thirtieth, not April twentieth, April twentieth has already passed. Yeah, it says an error in the memo, but the original document said they were looking at either April twenty third or thirtieth and considering we couldn't approve it prior to this, it'll be for the thirtieth. So you're recommending that we, if we make a motion to approve this and then allow them, the, the fire department to approve these in the future for up to five years?
Along with staff, yes.
The staff and the fire department, okay. I like that idea. So any comments or questions from members of the council, Alderman Doherty?
Or do they have a prayer, you have to burn it? So there's no real choice, if they want to really maintain a prayer, it has to be burned.
Right.
I would make that motion for five years.
Okay, so motion to approve and to allow staff in the fire department to continue to approve at this particular property for the next five years. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Alderman Bailey, any further discussion, Alderman Gelhard?
Just so I understand the, the burn is a one time a year thing, it's not like they could do this multiple times a year.
Understanding typically it's every other year.
Every other year.
Single burn.
One, one time, okay.
Any other discussion? Call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next item, chiefs brought us a request to approve police department participation in a speed grant and to approve participation in seatbelt and OWI grants. So chief, what would you bring in before us here? You want to ask for money and?
Well.
You're asking us to say, yes, you can.
We already have the money coming in, I'm asking for approval for it. So the police departments participated in a North Shore Traffic Safety Task Force for many years. It's a grant through Wisconsin Department of Transportation. Actually, the River Hills Police Department is the actual organization that writes for the grant. They administer it, basically all the other ones, they have different grants as it goes through the year. DOT is on a different schedule than, than everybody else. So what's coming up now is a five thousand dollar seatbelt grant. Or I'm sorry, speed grant. Basically, the way it works is they have a certain amount of time where we can do it. We have certain allocations, we send our overtime to River Hills, they send it to the state, they reimburse us for it. So I'm asking for approval for the, the five thousand dollar seatbelt and also asking for approval. We also do an OWI grant and a, I'm sorry, speed and a seatbelt grant. Those come out at different times of the year, it goes from calendar year to calendar, it's like in October through May. And asking for permission just to, when those come up to continue with those. We do put it in the budget as the expected revenue, so it offsets our overtime, so everything should balance all out.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Abolged.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
I can.
Second of Alderman Schmelzling, any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next is review and approval of memorandum of understanding between MMSD and the City of Glendale for invasive species removal and reforestation at sixty four fifty nine North Sunny Point Lane. I'll turn it over to the city administrator, Mr. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. Couple meetings ago, you received a presentation by representative of MMSD associated with this goat grazing pilot program. Even though you gave a thumbs up and were supportive of the initiative, they've now asked for an approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and Milwaukee Metropolitan Sewerage District. We received a late request from the representative of MMSD, since the city owns an adjacent vacant lot, they would like to apply the same goat grazing pilot program as well as a reforestation plan. So if you're open to including that additional lot, and I think Mayor Kennedy has the address for that lot.
At sixty four seventy seven North Sunny Point Lane. So the, the recommendation then from staff is that we approve the MOU with MMSD, but asks that it be changed to include two properties, sixty four fifty nine North Sunny Point and sixty four seventy seven North Sunny Point. Can I have a motion to that effect, please?
I'll move.
Move Alderman Doherty?
Second.
Second of Alderman Gelhard, any discussion?
Just to mention, for some of you that were not in attendance, there was a very successful neighborhood information meeting by the same representative that was, that presented the concept to you. And my understanding, all the questions by the neighbors were answered and the neighbors were supportive.
The neighbors were very supportive, actually, I've talked with one of them since then, so I think everyone's excited to have goats running around the neighborhood. Although they will actually be fenced in and do it in a specific area, but yeah.
It's been a Saturday morning down on the lane and I didn't, uncharacteristically, everything went well.
Good, Alderman Vukovich?
The conservancy associated with the easement allowing the reforestation is the eleven year period. The actual goat grazing pilot program, my understanding is two years.
I just was.
They, they get, they get brought in malt. They give they get brought in multiple times, a few weeks or months apart.
I just didn't necessarily want to tie the councils, future councils for eleven years of goat herd.
Now, the goats are the goats are on and off throughout a two year period and the spring, summer, early fall, and then the reforestation is what will take eleven years. So. All right. Any further discussion? Do we have a we had a motion already to approve, right? We just haven't voted. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next item is a resolution approving an intermunicipal agreement authorizing the connection of a Glendale property to the City of Milwaukee Water and Sanitary Sewer Facilities and Services, Mr. Hoffland.
Uh, yes, before you is a memo from payroll benefit specialist, Ms. Baldwin. It includes the background associated with a change. Again, this is a creation of a new position. However.
Well, you jumped ahead one.
I'm sorry.
We're on the resolution approving an intermunicipal agreement. This is for outreach community health. The property is in Glendale, but all the water and sewer lines are just a few feet away in Milwaukee. So, yeah, I think that's.
The last time, a similar agreement was before you. At that time, the city was unaware that we had the capacity to deal with the stormwater side of the project. Even though it's running through a private pipe, ultimately, we have the capacity to treat it, the stormwater within our community. So I'm asking you, one, to rescind the previously approved agreement, but to approve the agreement as attached in your packet. Again, the city of Milwaukee would work with the city of Glendale on water and Sancher Sewer Facilities and Services.
All right. So we've heard from staff. Is there a motion to approve?
A vote.
Move Alderman Gelhard. And is there a second? Second, Alderman Bailey. Any discussion? All right. You know, we have all these split parcels. It's nice that we're able to cooperate with our neighbors this way. So most of the building, I think actually the entire building will be in Glendale, but the water sewer infrastructure connects under the parking lot directly to the city of Milwaukee. So it's a good partnership between the two communities. All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. And our final item of new business is review and approve creation of an administrative services manager position. This is within the police department, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Hoffland and Ms. Baldwin.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, including your packet is a memo by Jessica Baldwin relating to a creation of this new position. Again, as I stated earlier, there is an incumbent in the police department who would move into this position. The existing position, which is an assistant, Ministry of Assistant to the Chief, would remain vacant. However, we would still list it on our classification structure just to give us flexibility down the road should the position become open in the future. With that, I'll turn it over to Jessica.
Um, based on recommendations that were made during the police organization study, they had recommended that the administrative assistant should be the supervisor over records and desk clerks. Um, the current employee has accepted that challenge and new assignments and has been doing those duties since September twenty twenty one. Discussions between myself and our own city administrator, deputy city administrator, chief of police led to the recommendation to create the new administrative services manager manager position based on those additional duties.
Thank you. So we have a recommendation from staff. Have a motion to approve. Moved by Alderman Schmelzling, second of Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? Alderman Schmelzling?
I'm just very happy to see that the recommendation is coming from that police organizational study is resulting in something that is positive change. So that's that's great. Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Next, we're going to move on to commission committee and board reports. And if it's all right with everybody, I would actually like to go first this time. And I'm going to ask if I can share my screen, please. PowerPoint, I want to. So this morning at the MMSD meeting, there was a presentation done about a lot of green infrastructure projects that are being completed in suburban school districts. And one of the ones that was represented this morning was Glen Hills Middle School, and I wanted to to just bring this up and make sure this becomes part of our record tonight because the Glen Hills Middle School proposal for green infrastructure changes is the only one that wasn't initiated by administrators or MMSD staff. It was actually initiated by sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students who are referred to as the green team. And and so they went to, they they worked together as a group and they went to MMSD, and they actually asked to have this project approved. And you can see, you know, the the things they're doing here to bio retention bio retention basins will be constructed. There will be a rain barrel. There'll be a bunch of native plantings. And this will actually help to stop thirty two thousand gallons of rain each year from going into the stormwater system. It'll actually be retained on the Glen Hills property. You can also see that the the funding for this comes from a significant portion from MMSD, but the school is also using some money. They're applying for some community improvement funds, grant funds, and then the city of Glendale. I guess they've worked with our public works department. The ten percent is actually in kind, so we're not giving money. But we're going to be, for example, one of the things they're creating is an outdoor classroom, and the seating there will actually be tree stumps. And so we're actually providing a whole bunch of tree stumps and a few other things. So mostly ours are in kind contributions from the city. But, um, you know, the this came up today, and I thought it was a really positive thing to share with all of you here at the council, you know, the good work that our schools are doing and that they're being recognized for it. So that, yeah, so that is my report, and I will now jump over to the city clerk first. Do you have anything to report? Chief, do you have anything to report?
I have any report.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report? Uh, Mr. Hoffland, anything to report? All right, I'm going to start with six and go backwards this time. So Alderman Shaw.
Last week, I know the North Shore Library met, but unfortunately I could not attend because I was working. And Wednesday we have a music in the Glenn committee meeting, and hopefully we'll be, we finalize our acts. We're just getting the final pieces put together, and I'm actually going to be working with the city attorney on one of our contracts to make sure that we're covered according to what the group would like us to be covered for them.
Thank you. Alderman Schmelzling.
Since we're on the topic of parties, move on to Fourth of July. We've we've gone down the road of potentially doing our own temporary class B so we could sell beer. I promise we will not do.
Vodka lemonade.
Vodka lemonade. And frankly, it's because our our prior beer vendor is not serving food, so we're going to try this ourselves and see if we can make a budget shortfall up. So another thing to note is we have got an accounting of last year's booklet sales or revenue. And actually, they were in the negative last year on the booklets, and this year they're also forecasting being negative on the booklet. So we cannot bank on expecting to make money off of the booklets. So that puts us in a tighter spot. So I think having the ticket sales, again, having the ticket booth, we actually have a sponsor who's going to be fixing up those really old booths that are in the DPW yard. And that's a, that's a all good news. So hopefully we'll get this all pulled together, and it's just looking for volunteers still. Thank you.
Thank you. So Alderman Bailey, welcome. What party are you going to plan for us? This apparently is the party side of the council.
Very underprepared for a party. I'd had an architectural review on Thursday. Thank you, Alderman Shaw, for showing up. So we had quorum, but we had three great products that went right there. So.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Gelhard?
Nothing to report tonight.
Alderman Doherty?
Nothing to report today.
And Alderman Vukovich?
I think do a part.
Okay, all right. So that concludes our commission committee and board and staff reports. We are notice to the public to convene in closed session, and this is for the purposes of discussing compensation strategy for police department management and union staff. So this is, and and Mr. Hoffland, will we be voting? Will you be asking us to vote on anything when we come out of the closed session? Yes. Okay, so for those who are attending virtually or those in the in the council chambers, there will be then council action after the closed session. Can I have a motion to convene in closed session, please? Move Alderman Gelhard. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Bailey. All those in favor of convening in closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? We are in closed session, and I will allow the clerk time to move people into the waiting room. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please leave the incoming city administrator in the closed session with us, Mr. Warwick? He's his name is actually listed, so. Okay, so the six, who is the six oh eight number? Is that Mr. Lancer? And the two six two number is the labor attorney. Okay, and then we'll leave Mr. Warwick in as well. Oh, I'll disconnect mine. That's fine. Yeah. Did you stop the recording? Jessica, could you just see if there's anybody in the lobby? I don't think there is, but just maybe open the door and prop it open just in case there is anybody in the lobby. Are you recorded? You started the recording? Okay, so we've now reconvened in open session. One of the issues that we discussed when we were in closed session is a salary compression issue within the police department. Our rank and file officers are covered by a collective bargaining agreement. However, the management employees are not covered by collective bargaining agreement, and we've reached a point where there's some pretty significant salary compression. The police officers have the ability to work overtime, and as a result, last year, seven of the top ten paid city employees were actually patrol officers who managed to get a significant amount of overtime. And the regard as how many hours the management employees work, they don't qualify for overtime. So the recommendation before us tonight would be a motion to authorize the police department salary compression adjustments as follows. Placing sergeants on the twenty twenty two wage scale step twelve of pay grade fifteen placement there on their twenty twenty two anniversary and an additional anniversary step in twenty twenty three to move them to step thirteen of pay grade fifteen, and the captain positions starting pay of step twelve of pay grade seventeen with a two step anniversary increase program. So that's what's been recommended by the city administrator and what we've discussed with staff in our closed session. Can I have a motion to adopt the action requested by the city administrator?
A move.
Move Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Motion carries. And that does conclude our items of business. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. A little second. Move Alderman Vukovich, second of Alderman Schmelzling. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? We stand adjourned.